This is the Greenfield Public Schools School Committee meeting. It's Wednesday, March 9th, 2022, 6:00 PM. We're at the John Zahn Community Center, 35 Pleasant Street. And we'll move right into our agenda. First item is a roll call and call to order. Please, Secretary Exstrom.
Member Denise.
Here.
Member Rick. Secretary Exstrom, I am here. Member Johnson Mossad?
Here.
Member Martini? Chair Poiroti?
Here.
Vice Chair Wall?
Here.
Mayor Weigertner?
Here.
All are assembled and we have a quorum.
Thank you. And we're called to order at 6:01 PM. We are so happy to have with us tonight Mike Kachewski, the Athletic Director, among other things, for our athletic programs. And I hear we have a number of bits of exciting news. So let's you give all the good news.
Oh, there we go. Good evening, everybody. Again, my name is Mike Kachewski. I work as an athletic director for the Greenfield Public Schools and just here to tell you a little bit about what's been going on for this year. We have, it's kind of been a closed situation two years ago. From pretty much this week, all our lives have changed, in the athletic world especially. And I kind of want to set off the tone that we're back to, not back to normal yet. We've still got some things that we're dealing with, but to some of the good things our student athletes have done in the Greenfield Public Schools. I'm going to first start off with how we did with the fall. By no means does this any hurt on any of our teams that didn't do as well as these teams. But for the fall, our field hockey team won the Class B Western Mass title. They beat Smith Academy in the Western Mass. And a little bit of lead up to that is, the MIA changed all of the formats of how tournaments go. And it's now a true state tournament. There's top 32 teams within the state. And so we, as Western Mass Athletic Directors, decided that we did not want to lose the Western Mass tournament. So we figured our schedules out to be able to still do a Western Mass tournament. And we reclassified all the teams within Western Mass. So Greenfield fell in the Class B tournament in field hockey. And we've won that. And we then went on to the state tournament, which we traveled to Lynn, Mass, and lost to St. Mary's in overtime in a heartbreaker. But we had a great season. Some of those kids that were seniors on that team won four Western Mass titles in their five years. And it was a tribute to, you know, their success in the last few years. Our girls soccer team, Hannah's, was one of them. They beat Smith Academy in the MIA prelims. Unfortunately, when they got to the round of 32, they lost to Palmer. But they've had a great season. Before COVID, they won a league title. And they got their banner finally. That was all over me. We got the banner for girls soccer. It's their first one in school history to be able to have a league championship. Football, we had a really good season. We have a co-op with some area schools. We had 28 kids that competed. We were put in Division VII. We had a 16 seed in Division VII. We got to go play Northbridge, out in Northbridge. We had our 28 kids, they had their 62, and they had 26 seniors. And unfortunately, we lost, but we competed. It was the first time we made the playoff in 10 years. So the fall was a pretty successful season for all our student athletes. This winter, we just ended up with, this winter, our boys team got a 17th seed in Division V. They did not, they lost the first round of the Western Mass, but they got a 17th seed in the Division V tournament. And they had the capability to go out to Salem, Mass, this past Friday night. And unfortunately, they lost to Salem Charter School in Salem.
Mike, was that basketball?
Basketball. Did I say basketball? I'm sorry.
You didn't say anything.
Boys basketball? All right, I'm sorry. I didn't read my notes very well. Maybe I should get a better prescription. Boys basketball, excuse me. They lost, but they were down 18 to start the fourth quarter, and they got it down to two with a minute left in the game. So it was a tough loss for them, but they had a pretty decent season. They were going to lose some seniors, but the JV team competed pretty well. So hopefully, we got some numbers coming up for that. Our ice hockey team, they won the Class B Western Mass tournament. That's coming off of a Western Mass tournament two years ago. They were the last state champion to be the true state champion before COVID hit, because everybody else in the MIA shared the state championship. But Greenfield was the only one that had a true state champion stand alone. So this year, they were, they won the Class B. They beat Chickopee in the final. They got ranked a 32 seed, and they had a prelim game against Gardner last week, a week ago today, matter of fact. They beat Gardner in the prelim. And then they, for beating Gardner, they got to go to Kingston, Mass, and play Norwell, Mass, which was the number one seed, who was a Division II team two years ago, and they moved them down to Division IV. It was a pretty, pretty tough game for us. We stuck with them for two periods, and it was a 0-0 tie. And then they scored a goal. And then we had an hour and a half delay because one of the student athletes from Norwell decided to jump through the glass and break the glass. And it was kind of all downhill from there. And it was not a fun trip home. That was a seven-hour day for those kids. But they made the MIA tournament, and they can say that they competed very well. Our spring sports start March 21st, which is right around the corner, because we know all this snow is going to be gone by then. We also had a really neat thing yesterday. I'm trying to promote our student athletes that are going on to college to play sports. We have many students that are going on to college, but in my tenure here since 2004, I don't believe we had multiple. We've had one or two maybe, but we had three. We had a signing yesterday. Tess Rancourt is going to Merrimack College, and she signed her letter of intent to go there. So I decided to bring in a couple other athletes that are going on to college to play their respective sports. Drew Conant, who is going to Castleton State University to play football. And Kelsey Richardson is going to Herkimer College, the junior college, to play softball. So we had a little ceremony yesterday afternoon, and it was kind of neat in trying to brought some kids and to see what some of the things that they could accomplish with their athletic careers and academia and things. So that's pretty much where I'm at for, you know, as I said, if anybody has any questions on how anything has gone, you're always invited to any game that we have. All our games are going to be on Arbiter Live, and you can just put in Greenfield High School. Also, I would also like to thank Greenfield Community Television, Philippe and Nick. I also like to thank FCAT, for they did all of our hockey games that were home, and they even traveled down to the away game down in Kingston. And one of their clips, it wasn't great for Greenfield, but one of their clips went viral on Barstool Sports and NHL Network, the kid jumping through the glass, of course. But they have been great supporters. They have done some great jobs during COVID time. GCTV, Philippe was there a numerous amount of hours to do our volleyball and our basketball when nobody else could go to the games. And they've kind of continued on with that to be able to stream all of the games on YouTube. And it's kind of neat the kids get to see, thinking that they're on big-time TV. And also, they get to go back and cut all the clips and make any recruiting things that they want to do. So it's a good thing to be able to have and have that support, and I want to thank them a lot. So anybody have any questions?
Thanks, Mike. No, that's terrific. Questions for Coach Kachewski? Anybody? Member Johnson Mossad, go ahead.
Anything you need from us as a school committee to support you and the athletes and everything that you're doing?
I think Dr. DeBarge has that in her budget. You know, there's, I think that what we have in the budget, and I understand how everything goes, and we've done a lot of good things. Our coaches and our students have done a lot of great things with mirrors, basically to say. And we've got a lot of great support from the community and businesses. And, you know, with times changing like they are, it's been tougher and tougher and tougher and tougher. Money doesn't solve all woes, for sure. It's our feet to the ground to try to keep the athletic department going the right way. But just trying to get people to understand that we're working hard for our community and trying to support our community as best we possibly can and put a really good aura on our student athletes. That's our number one goal. We have a great coaching staff. We have a veteran coaching staff that understands the concept of what we're trying to do. We are not always trying to win. We're trying to make great kids to go out in the community and do great things. We feel that athletics is life. We feel that you make a commitment to athletics, you're going to make a commitment in life, and it's a life skill. And a lot of our coaches, I would say, not a lot, I would say all of our coaches understand that philosophy, and we try to abide by that each and every day. So yes, money is great, but it doesn't solve all woes. Oh, yes, you know that, Mayor. Money helps.
Other questions or comments? We appreciate you being here. Thank you.
I appreciate your time, and I wish you all the best of luck.
And you're welcome back anytime you have good news or anytime you need the school committee, of course.
I greatly appreciate. Hopefully we'll see you.
You can bring us bad news if you have to, but the good news is awesome.
No, I'll bring you good news as much as I can, and hopefully we'll see you at a game sometime. Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Thanks, Mike. All right. I would like to actually, if it's okay with the rest of the committee, do a slight change to the order of our reports and actually move the superintendent's report specifically up. Do you want to do the whole thing now?
No, just the...
Oh, because we have a part of the superintendent's report that is kind of a surprise, and we're, we want to do it ahead of time. Does anyone oppose on the school committee to just doing that now? The mayor might be.
I'm not opposed, but you had a couple of people come in during public comment. Did you want to?
We didn't do public comment yet. That was Mike.
Oh, that was just Mike?
That was athletic update.
That was only Mike?
We didn't get to public comment.
Oh, all right.
Do we?
No opposition? We can do, well, she just wants to make an announcement. Did you?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Take it away.
So I would like to share that Ms...
I know, I know we would love to hear a little bit about what would prompt the nomination.
I will say, I think it's... Or did she know this was going to happen? I'm sure she would have tried to dissuade me from this had she known, which is why she didn't know.
Sure. So good evening. Angela Mass, teacher at Greenfield High School and the Student Council Advisor and Resident of Greenfield. Each year, we attend a conference. This year, what traditionally used to be our Hyannis three-day trip to the Cape, this year will be a one-day trip to Worcester University. It's happening this Saturday. We're taking 12 students. And part of that banquet ceremony is an opportunity to honor advisors, administrators, and students. So one of the things that we did in preparation was both Haley and I wrote a letter of support for Karen as the Administrator of the Year. The fact that she received this letter unfortunately means she didn't win in the state, but she certainly is a winner in our hearts of Greenfield. We both spoke to the fact that she started out last year. The program runs February to February, so she was still our principal at the high school last year. But even in her transition to the central office, we at the high school still felt extremely supported by her in our transitioning time until we had Mr. Morrison as our current principal. So yesterday, she received the two letters of support that both Haley and I wrote. So she read them, and she knew that we nominated her, but she certainly didn't know that we were coming to speak tonight.
Yeah, this awesome opportunity to go to Hyannis, fake Hyannis this year. It's been one of my favorite Student Council activities throughout the years. I'm a senior now. I'm the president of our council, and I started as an eighth grader. And I obviously knew Mrs. Pat Noad long before that from the middle school. And just when we got the chance to nominate people this year for awards, it was just without hesitation. We were like, yep, we need to nominate her. She's just one of those people who, no matter what kind of day you're having, she just makes it amazing. Whether you have a bad day, she makes it a good one, or you have a good one, and she makes it even better. We really, really miss her at the high school and her warm welcomes, her hugs, her smiles, her good mornings. But when she does stop by, she always has a crowd around her. We're like, oh, my gosh, Miss Pat Noad's here. So we wanted to give her a little bit of love from the high school, since she's not there every day, and show her that, you know, we're still thinking of her. She has a special place in our hearts, and I'm really happy that I got to nominate her for this award.
That's really terrific. Thank you, guys, for taking the time to do that. Congratulations, ASKP. I was going to ask you guys questions or let these folks ask you guys questions, but we'll do it next. We'll invite you back to talk about student, is it Student Council? Is that what it's called?
Student Council.
Yeah, yeah. You have to be careful.
It's a good time to ask, because we're here.
Come back up. Do anyone else have a question besides me for Student Council? Just really quickly. You guys do fundraising stuff, like I saw something about a polar plunge. Tell us about the polar plunge that you recently did.
So the polar plunge is usually part of that Hyannis trip.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it is. We run into the ocean in March.
To raise money for?
So imagine going to the ocean right now.
Did you guys go to the pool to do it? Where'd you, you actually went to the...
This year, we did a water balloon fight at our school.
A water balloon fight.
We got to raise money for Special Olympics, which has been like one of our favorite, you know, charities to donate to. And so we raised over $1,500 this year.
It was $1,800, and you should really ask Shane about the last, this is like really bad feedback, but the last $300 that came in was because we had a little competition between two students, where one student's mother went to work and said, it was one water balloon for every $10 raised, and said, if you would like to donate to my daughter, please do so. But if you would like to donate to her competition, you could do that also. So Shane rigged in another $140 as Zoe's competition. So it was a pretty heated Zoe-Shane competition. It was, it was a lot of fun.
We need more of this at school committee, I believe. That is fantastic. Yes, yes, that's great. Awesome. Well, thank you. And all the, I see how active you all are. I see the announcements that come out about getting involved, and I think it's terrific. So thank you. Do be careful, Haley, because you may end up on school committee someday.
I hope so. I hope I'm the teacher in the district someday.
Awesome. Well, we will welcome you back. That's great. Thank you both for taking the time. And the moral support over there, too. Thank you. All right. That was great. Thank you all for that, and congratulations, ASKP, again.
May I interrupt?
Yeah.
Just quickly. So I just got a text from someone, and I'm reading it out loud. It says, "The video feed and volume are not working for our meeting."
And what are they watching from?
I don't know.
I also noticed, Philippe, and I could hear it, and they were saying there's feedback on the public comment. Mike, it sounds funny. Something's happening. It's like, not right. Okay. Thank you for the wonders of technology, huh?
Yeah.
Thank you for that. Okay, so we'll go on to, we're now on item three, approval of minutes from three previous meetings, February 9, March 1, and March 3. Those are in the packet. And if, what I'd like to do is consent approval, a motion to approve all three as a consent item. Can I get a motion to that effect?
So moved.
That's Vice Chair, Secretary Exstrom, and a second?
Second.
Was Vice Chair Wall. And any discussion of any of the minutes? I'm not hearing any. So let's move to a vote. Anyone opposed to approving the minutes? Anyone abstaining from approving the minutes? So those pass unanimously. Thank you. And we will go on to item four, which is public comment. Is anyone here? Anyone? No public comment? Really? Thank you all for no public comment. I'm just kidding. We can have public comment anytime we want. I'm sorry about the snow. Come back. We are next scheduled to meet April, the second Wednesday in April, whatever date that is. And we'll go on to, we sure there's no one here for public comment? Really? Okay.
Wait, don't go on. I'm going to, I'm sorry to interrupt. So the people who are unable to hear anything, because I'm just relaying information, hopefully it will help you, help us all to figure out what's going on. Phone via YouTube. Others are writing to say the volume cut out, and no one heard the announcement.
I'll say it again, really.
Good. Okay. And the announcement is also printed in the superintendent's report in the packet.
So we'll get to say it again.
There we go.
Just because...
Sure. Go ahead. Public comment, you have three minutes. State your name and the town you live in. Go ahead.
Wendy Goodman, and I live in Greenfield. And I just want to say how lovely it was to hear that you were celebrated and so appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. That's very nice. Thank you. Reports from our student representatives. It doesn't look like Brielle's here. It's the Shane Toomey solo show. Take it away, Shane.
There we go. Mike trouble. Anyway, so beginning with Student Council, back to the polar plunge. Again, we raised $1,800 for the Special Olympics in Massachusetts, and students participated in the polar plunge, as previously stated, by having water balloons thrown at each other in the parking lot on Friday. $1 again, or $10 was again worth $1, one water balloon. So thank you to all the students who donated and people who helped bring in money. Six students attended the MAS-C Special Olympics Bocce Tournament at Minichaug on Sunday, and students played six rounds of bocce, played games at the Olympic Village, and made memories for years to come. This Saturday, 12 students will be traveling to the 45th Annual MAS-C Student Council Conference at Worcester University, which was previously in Hyannis. Haley Campbell and Hannah Warrior will run a workshop, and students will hear from keynote speakers and attend student-led workshops. On March 15, or March 18 and 19, the Student Council is running a free prom attire drive. We are still looking for donations of dresses, suit jackets, ties, shoes, and accessories. The 18th is for GHS students only, and the 19th is open to the public from 11 to 1:00. We have sent invitations to all neighboring schools. On Tuesday, March 15, at 6:00, the GHS Key Club/Save Promise Club is sponsoring a volleyball tournament to benefit the Sandy Hook Foundation. It's $10 for a team and must consist of at least six students to enter, and prizes are awarded for the top four teams. Spectators are welcome, as are donations, and there will be a bake sale as well. To sign up, you can either see Miss Moore or Tess Rancourt. Classes have been meeting to work on individual class fundraisers, as well as preparation for Bleacher Wars, which will take place on March 25. Currently, the junior class is holding a dip and dessert mix fundraiser. If you would like to help support the junior class, you can see Senor Cludier to receive a form and purchase some great spices. The senior class is also selling raffle tickets to fundraise for prom and other future events. On top of other work classes happen doing, each grade has started working on plans for our annual Bleacher War, where students decorate their section of bleachers to display class spirit and creativity. There will also be a dodgeball tournament and various minute-to-win-it games that day. French and Spanish clubs have been hard at work for preparing for Taste of World Cultures on Wednesday, March 30, from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at GHS. The event will be a mix of live performances, pre-recorded content, and food. The GHS Advanced European History class put on a mock retrial of Galileo Galilei's trial for violating the doctrine of the Roman Catholic Church in the 1600s. GHS students worked for the past five weeks researching 17th-century primary source documents, as well as scholarly secondary sources. With their research, they brought to life historical figures, acted as lawyers for the prosecution and defense, and provided expert support during the trial. The trial was held in the GHS library on Tuesday, March 8, and was broadcast on Greenfield Community Television yesterday evening. Viewers can still watch the trial on GCTV website and are invited to vote for guilty or not guilty on the voting form on the GCTV website. The Library Club is hosting its annual Poetry Slam on Tuesday, April 5, at 2:15 PM in the GHS library. In preparation for the slam, Library Club will have a poetry writing workshop next Tuesday, March 15, immediately after school in the library. Everyone is invited to participate. Five NHS members attended a virtual field trip today entitled "Breaking the Cycle of Hunger." They are preparing a presentation for the full group at our next meeting, and they are using the information learned to create their own service project. Other groups went to GMS last week to volunteer in fifth-grade classes to model good citizenship and talk about being a productive student. This collaborative work will continue for the foreseeable future. Beginning next week, students will be selecting their courses for the 2022 through 2023 school year. These classes aren't final, but they will help the staff get a general idea of how many students are interested in enrolling in certain classes. Within a few weeks of that time, seventh graders from the middle school will also have their step-up day, where they will come to the GHS for a tour and select their classes for eighth grade, as well as receive a general tour of the building during the process. That's all for the report. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to help answer them.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Very thorough job, as always, Mr. Toomey. Thank you very much. All right, moving right along. Reports of the administration, ASKP. You're in the spotlight again tonight. You're up. Go ahead.
I just want to thank Student Council, Ms. Mass, very humbled by the nomination. And right back at you, love you, too. I also want to say I had the pleasure this week of being the judge at the Galileo trial. So it's been an enjoyable week for me to be at the high school and be back among the kids. So thank you for that. A bit lengthy report on the DESI District School Report Cards as a Title I school district. We are required to send out our district report cards, school and district, to all of our families. That was done on February 11. I've included, though, the links where you can find them here as well, and there's a plethora of information. I want to start with the caveat, though, that the data is reflective over 18 months of interrupted learning time, 10 months remote, and some accountability was negated by DESI because of the pandemic. So it's not really as if you're comparing apples to apples in the yearly reflections. So if you're not a data person, just remember that when you're looking at some of the numbers. Some of the highlights, though, our advanced-level coursework is just below the state average, which I think speaks volumes to what's going on at our high school. We continue to be a district that funds and invests in the arts. 92.9% of our students have access compared to the statewide average of 77.5. So I thought that was really nice to see. Our graduation rate remains at or above the state average, and our post-secondary enrollment remains close to the state average. So I thought, you know, looking longevity pre-K through 12, those were some good highlights to show you all tonight. I do highlight, though, some significant areas of need that are not surprising, I don't think. We do have two schools in turnaround, and we do have some gaps in curriculum, which I think is reflective in some of these highlights here. One is our attendance rate. I'm always thinking about, you know, if you can at least get the student in front of you and have the accessibility to learning, you're on a good track. That's part of the battle, is getting them to the building and learning. And if you look at our district comparative to the state average, students in Greenfield missed 16.4 days per school compared to the state average of 10.6. So that's an area that we're going to be focusing on as an administrative team and talking about. The next two significant areas of need, I highlight grades three through eight. Because of all the work in the curriculum that I'm doing with math and ELA and trying to invest in high-quality instructional materials, I thought it was important to just highlight those statistics for you if there was ever data supporting the need for adopting and implementing and supporting budgetarily over the course of the years for high-quality instructional materials. Those two pieces of data, I think, really reflected that. We are going to take a lot of the other data that's not included. You certainly can look at the whole district report card. You certainly can look at the whole district report card and you can go school by school. So they delineate it by A E L through the high school if you want to look at a particular school. But the administrative team, which includes the superintendent, myself, will be reviewing certain areas of focus and deciding next steps as stakeholders on school district goals, as well as district goals that align with that. With that being said, we are in the midst of the investigate and select process with the E L A High Quality Instructional Materials. We had our last district meeting this morning with DESI. And we are doing presentations to all of our school councils, K through seven. The first meeting happened today at the Discovery School. And myself, along with the E L A coach, did a presentation to the families there. It was very well-attended. We had Mr. Browning send an I'll call on Monday, just to remind folks. But I've also included the other three that will be occurring in the future. So Federal Street's going to have a principal coffee hour this Friday. And I've shown the link here, and it's included in my work that's online. So if folks need to access it. Ms. Halpin will be sending out an I'll call tomorrow to remind folks. And then G M S and Newton will hold theirs next week. I want to just say to families, though, even if you can't make your school that your child attends, you could go to any of these meetings because the coaches have prepared the same presentation for all of their school councils. They'll just be addressing, you know, the difference will be that Missy at G M S will really highlight some of the middle school needs as opposed to the elementary. But if you missed the Discovery one today, you could always attend the Federal Street or the Newton one. We'll be in attendance at all of those. We have a PowerPoint presentation explaining how we got to the process that we're at now. Just to summarize for all of you, though, we researched seven programs. We eliminated two off the bat for not meeting our district priorities, for not being highly rated in curate or ed reports, and for really failing to have a diversified selection. And then we remained with five. We met with all five publishers last Thursday and Friday, the district coaches and myself. We spent hours interrogating them on their curriculum programs. I don't think they were quite prepared for us. So it was a very interesting and informative day. And from those conversations, we have really honed in on two that we want to present to families and teachers. So we're going to do that at school council. We're going to do that at faculty meetings. Publishers then have given us access to the materials so that teachers can get their hands on it in the next month. And then we'll be asking for field testers in every building so that they can pilot these two programs and collect data. And then teachers can take that data, along with the coaches and myself, and make an informative decision. So it's pretty exciting where we are. And hopefully, we will get to a good choice before June. Yeah. Lastly, just the professional development update. We continue our work with Dr. Lourdes Alvarez Ortiz on trauma-informed practices. She's been coming to faculty meetings. And alternatively, when she is not at faculty meetings, our work with the collaborative and the social justice and equity specialist continues. So folks either engage in work with one or the other, usually at the faculty. All of you were provided with the Teaching to Strengths book today. So I encourage you to read along and see what our faculty, staff, and employees are all engaging in, and how to really adopt an asset-based approach, even when dealing with folks in your own life. And then lastly, our elementary library assessment and equity audit is really moving along. I really want to thank the two that have really been putting in a lot of hard work in weeding the collection at Newton. And we hope at the April school committee meeting, we'll bring a list for surplus so that we can re-engage with ordering new and exciting collection materials for Newton and get their library back to a place that our students deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, A S K P. Any questions or comments for the Assistant Superintendent? Secretary Ekstrom.
Do you have time to eat and sleep while you're doing all of these things?
They're overrated.
No. Okay. Right. Sorry about that.
Member Johnson-Rusad, go ahead.
Can you tell us any known best practices for improving attendance rates? Like, what does that work look like to improve those?
I'll send you the link, though, to DESI has a whole 10-page manual now because it's not simply a Greenfield thing. The pandemic, I think, has really affected attendance rates across the state. You know, district leadership teams are, I know our school-based S S T slash C S T teams, which are student support team. They look at attendance every week and do outreach, really family support and engaging with families and trying to find out reasons as to why students don't come. It's very individualistic most of the time. Really following up and being proactive about ways that we can engage and really find alternatives for what is inhibiting certain students from not attending. But it's definitely a challenge and one that we're going to be talking about just in the future and goals and trying to figure out how to improve as a district as well.
Thank you. Other questions, comments? Member Martini, go ahead.
I wonder, how does this attendance rate compare to the past for Greenfield? Or do you not know?
I don't have that information on me, but I certainly could look and get back to you.
I wonder if we could, in those get-backs, hear about whether or not it seems that particular policies related to the pandemic have been a part of that increased attendance issue. It seems like that might be likely. And if so, how might that impact our choices about that in the future?
I think it's very fair to say that, you know, the, the assessment period that these reports are taken from was at the end of last school year, when obviously we were still, we, the entire Commonwealth, was dealing with a level of COVID infection still. And this year, with the policies that have been in place in terms of responding to illness, we've certainly had a higher level of absenteeism than we may typically because in many cases, we're actually instructing students to stay home. So I think the bigger piece for us administratively, excuse me, is to look at individual student data, as Karen referenced. And it's not just a sweeping response to student attendance, but really to look at students individually and determine if the absences were primarily medically based or if there were other factors influencing. So this is, you know, last year and this year, I would believe we have some very unique circumstances affecting our attendance rates. So I assume that's generally what you were thinking?
Yeah.
That COVID affected some of that.
I was just thinking, I know it's probably pretty obvious that there have been increased absences because of having to send students home or have them stay home. And there have been certain rules or policies put in place by DESI about whether instruction can be provided in certain ways, such as remote instruction. And so there's certain things you can and cannot do. So I'm just thinking about how the pandemic might go because we don't really know if we're going to continue going in the direction we are right now or if things are going to get worse again in the future. And if so, how can we kind of mitigate the, mitigate the damage to students when they're missing school from that?
That's why this will be something that the administrative team looks at in much more depth. But, you know, when you pull up the report card, it's, some statistics were striking. So that's why, you know, those were highlighted. But all of these statistics, the ones we're celebrating and the ones that are of concern, all have a lot of factors behind them that we either want to enhance or mitigate. Not to use one of the bad COVID words, but, you know, we need to either keep doing and making better the things that are working for students or figure out the underlying causes and try to address them. So lots of data crunching and problem-solving will be on the horizon.
May I piggyback on your response? Just because I've been having these conversations for five years. The, the two schools that are currently in turnaround, quite a bit of the reason behind that was related to attendance. And students were struggling, which was showing up in the schools because they weren't attending classes. And, you know, as they were getting, we had three separate elementary schools that then fed everyone into the middle school. So if there was a particular school that was struggling with attendance more than others, those children then were at the middle school. And that was starting to be reflected there. Which also feeds into consistent curriculum being done across the school district. And better able to monitor and research data and look at data and get a better, accurate reflection of the education that students are receiving. So while, I mean, because I went through this and read, read all the data because I'm a nerd like that. And so some of this didn't surprise me at all because we have traditionally had some attendance issues at a couple of the schools for, you know, a number of reasons. And so, again, when I read this, I wasn't surprised by any means. Just a little background.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for? Yeah, go ahead.
I wonder about the job description that had been put forward last month for the outreach position in the district. Do you imagine that that is a role that might be helpful in communicating with families about this particular issue?
I certainly envision that the person who fills that role will be interfacing with families who are struggling getting their kids to school. I don't want to bite off more than we can chew on behalf of the person yet to be hired, but I think.
I was wondering how it's going.
Yeah. I think that's an important piece. So I anticipate it, but we'll, I think I put that in there, that there would be home visits. So I think it would be all connected.
I was thinking it might tie in.
Yeah, very reasonable to think so.
And just to shift gears a little bit. Karen, last time you had talked about a grant that you were intending to apply for in support of the transition to new instructional materials. So I was just wondering if there's any update on that and if that's going to be coming through.
There is an update. And we did receive word this week that we were awarded the grant for the E L A. Our application for the math got approved. So we're just pending approval of the award of the grant after they review our application. So fingers crossed that the math also comes through. So we're very excited with that news this, this week.
Great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for all those good questions. Thank you. Superintendent's report. Go ahead.
I already did the good part, but since people at home were not able to hear, I'm happy to repeat that the first item on my report is to offer congratulations and to ask everyone to join me in congratulating Karen for having been nominated for the Administrator of the Year Award by the Massachusetts Association of Student Councils. Angela Mass, our student council advisor at G H S. And Haley Campbell, a senior who is our student council president this year, provided letters of support for Karen's nomination. And while she was unfortunately, and I believe erroneously not chosen as the state-level winner, we are extremely happy. I am extremely happy that she's with us. And I know Greenfield High School's loss is central office's gain. And for those of you who couldn't see, she was presented with flowers and a congratulatory balloon by Haley. So, oh, I was putting that away. I have other things to say. That was the best. So we're still encouraging families of both preschool and kindergartners to register. We have had some folks come in or do the registration online, which is fantastic. But getting our students registered early is extremely important. We want to have as many incoming kindergartners registered as possible before our screening date of April 15th. That provides our kindergarten teachers with information that they use to help set classrooms and to have conversations about students who may be well ahead of the learning expectations for entering kindergartners or students who may need some additional assistance when they enter. So getting, getting in on time for that screening is important. And the other things it helps us do is track our enrollment trends because we're going to let as many of our students get enrolled as possible, especially at the kindergarten level, before we're able to start having conversations about intraschool choice. So the sooner we're able to get as much information as possible, the better the entire district structure for enrollment will be. But we really want the kids for that screening. And preschool, we are very happy to have our students enrolling in preschool. We had a nice group that attended the open house. And I would encourage anyone interested in the Academy of Early Learning to please either call our registrar or call over to the school and talk with Ms. Putnam, the principal there. So as had been referenced, you folks have a copy of our text for our professional learning around asset-based trauma-informed care. All staff in district participated in the opening work on this. And all staff has been given a copy of the book. That includes our cafeteria, custodial staff, transportation staff, because everyone in the district interfaces with students at some point. And they interface with each other. And this approach to having conversations, we think, is extremely valuable for everyone, especially given all of the happenings of the past two years. It's all the more important. So we wanted all of you to be in the same place as the rest of the school community and wanted to make sure that you were provided the book. At this stage, we're definitely, I would say, if you're interested in keeping pace, the first two chapters would be suggested at this point. So there will not be a test, though.
Thank you for that suggestion.
Okay. Well, I will not be giving you a test. I have provided for the committee's discussion tonight the proposal from N E S D E C for the best use of educational facilities. So, and then we had talked about, N E S D E C was doing enrollment projections for us. They just, just came in and we have not administratively even had the opportunity to really look at them to see if we have any questions. So I will have those for the committee in April to review in their entirety. And then, as we know, we've moved to a mask optional situation in Greenfield. And I just want to reiterate that while students who are unvaccinated, it's still recommended that they mask, students and staff. It is their choice. And Greenfield School community members who are vaccinated can choose whether they wear a mask or not. We are still utilizing many of the mitigation strategies that we have been, such as windows open or the use of air purifiers in our classrooms. We will maintain hand sanitizer, just because that's, I'll get after, just because that's good hygiene, hand sanitizer, hand washing. Our cleaning and disinfecting protocols are the same. And even though we will slowly be bringing classroom furniture that had to be moved out to make the social distancing, we'll be bringing that back slowly. And our cafeteria setups will return to normal, you know, pre-pandemic normal, slowly. We will still have space in every classroom and in cafeterias so that students who wish to have a little bit more space around them will have the opportunity to do so. So that's, I wanted to just share kind of where we are at this stage. And our buses are also, because M S C has, has chosen to follow our lead in terms of mask optional. But, you know, we're still going to have some things in place. And we are still leaving the water bubblers covered. Just seemed like an unnecessary risk because some students, especially as they're younger and learning to use water bubblers are, you know, it's just a good idea to not have all of our students using the bubblers. So we'll continue to have water bottles. And we're still working on the district plan to have more water bottle filling stations installed. So that's still coming. So, yeah, I don't, don't know what to say about bubblers. The F Y 23 budget hearing is scheduled for Monday. The superintendent's proposed budget is on the Greenfield Public Schools website. And if anyone is interested in a hard copy of it, they can just call my office and we'll get one mailed. get one mailed out. As I've shared before, and will share every day, the budget is an ever-changing thing. So the superintendent's budget reflects the moment in time that we said stop in print. So, and then after I do the budget presentation for the committee, I will also include that online if anyone would like to see it after. And then finally, we are pleased to say that Dr. Laura Davis has joined the middle school as our interim associate principal, filling the position that Mr. Pratt vacated. We were very fortunate that she was able to start right after vacation, so we had no instructional days that were without the associate principal, the second associate principal in place. So that was fantastic. So, and then I continue to share with anyone who's interested, the process for volunteers is on the Greenfield Public Schools website, or they can contact my office, and Lauren will be happy to walk people through the process for volunteers.
Thank you. Questions for the superintendent? I'm going to move on. Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
You mentioned about the enrollment numbers, predictions and everything, and I'm just wondering how the COVID experience is affecting that or predictions? How accurate do we expect they'll be, given this situation with the pandemic?
I don't, I'm assuming that NESDEC, as I said, we've just gotten it. I haven't been able to do a deep dive into the numbers. They're so recent. But I'm happy to check with them to see if that is considered a factor, if it's not identified in the report.
Other questions? All right, I'm moving on. Thank you, Superintendent DeBarge. The school committee reports, I do not have a report, as I often do not, and I'm very interested in just keeping the meeting moving. So, subcommittee reports, our only subcommittee that has met since our last meeting is policy and program. And, Member Johnson, we said we didn't talk about this ahead of time, but as chair of policy and programming, a program, I'm hoping you can lead us through the pieces here.
Yes, I'm happy to.
Perfect. All right, take it away. Go ahead.
So you'll see we have three bins of policy and program work to do together tonight. The first bin is items that were, kind of one-off items that we're looking at for the first time. One is revision to our public comment policy, which I'm hoping Amy Poirot will be willing to speak to, since she brought it to the subcommittee for a revision. And then we have an item related to streamlining our payment procedures, which the superintendent will speak to. The second bin is connected to something that's in our, we have a policy about how we adopt policy. And so I have some of that language here. So in typical times or with, through the ordinary course of business, items are brought for a first reading and approval of wording, and then they are brought to the next meeting for a second reading and adoption or rescission. But in an emergency situation, I'm just reading right from the policy now, "The committee may adopt or amend on the first reading. In such circumstances, the policy or amendment should return a second time for affirmation of the emergency policy decision." And so in the past, we had kind of gotten a little sloppy, maybe it was more of an issue of semantics, but we used to say that we're waiving the second reading. And so that's in our agendas and minutes from the past. I think just to bring it in line with our current policy, we're calling this, this bin, items that were kind of approved on an emergency basis and implemented immediately, but they need to be affirmed. So we have that listed as items for affirmation. So these are items that the school committee previously adopted on a, on an expedited basis. So we'll, this is essentially the second reading or an affirmation of those. And then the third is, it's listed on the agenda as review of Section C policies, but I believe this is really the first reading of those policies. And it's kind of in its own bin because it's part of our review of the entire policy handbook with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So this is the entire Section C about general school administration, which we will look at tonight. We will have a subcommittee where we review people's feedback on this section, and then we will bring it back with revisions, if any, for a second reading at a future meeting. So that's the kind of overall orientation to the policy and program business tonight.
Sounds fun.
Yes. Any questions?
Let's go through, one, two, like, let's go through them in order, and then-
I wonder if I could just, if people have questions about the overview first.
The overall process? Yes, I actually do have a question about that, so that would be great, but I-
Go ahead, you were already talking.
When we get to the review of the full section?
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of how we're going to go about it?
Yes.
Okay. That's all I want, you don't have to tell me now.
That's all, okay. I will tell you.
That's pretty much where I was going to go, because I'm holding this big thing going, holy crow, we're going to, wow! Anyway.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the term "reading" has been kind of misunderstood in the past as needing to actually read through the entire thing. We will not be doing that. I'm sorry to disappoint you if you were looking forward to that. But anyway.
And Mayor Weidergartner, you have your-
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
You were just hanging out. That's fine, totally fine.
Yes, I was doing this.
And Extron, you got your-
Really, that's what I was going to say.
That's what you're going to ask, okay.
Wow, this is a big package. Are we really going to do all of it?
So the first reads, Member Johnson Musad, do you want to make the motion? Do you want to do them, there's only two, I think we should do them separately, but if you had a different plan?
Yes, they should be done separately. So maybe I would ask for a motion to approve the amended public comment section as presented, which deletes the sentence about, oh, actually, hmm.
Yeah, I think it's wrong.
Yes, it is, okay.
So, yes, and that's-
Why don't you set this up?
Let's make the motion first.
Oh, let's make the motion first, okay.
Make the motion first, go ahead.
All right, so, well, let me then adjust it, because we have to make it a little bit more. It's not as presented. So, "We're looking for a motion to approve BEDH, public comment at school committee meetings, striking these sentences. The public comment segment shall not exceed 15 minutes, and the presiding chair may permit extension of this time limit by an additional 15 minutes in extenuating circumstances." Essentially, where the only change that is in this is for getting rid of the time limit. So that's what we need a motion for.
Okay, so that's your motion. We'll check with Susan Farber in a second. Who wants, does anyone want to second that?
Second.
Let's see, a second from the mayor. Susan Farber, do you have what you need? She's good. Okay. Discussion. I was just going to mention that I did bring this forward to the policies committee. I'm not interested in having a 15-minute time limit on public comment at all, particularly because the instant we revised the public comment policy that everyone had an issue with previously, something was invented to have an issue with in this policy, the 15 minutes. So take it out. Like, I just, we have never once limited public comment in my time attending school committee or as chairing school committee, so I feel like, let's just try it like this and use the discretion of the chair for whatever. I don't want people to be angry about something that we likely wouldn't enforce anyway. So that was my thought around it. Other discussion? Mayor Weidergartner?
Just to clarify, so you are in favor of the deletion of the public comment segment shall not exceed 15 minutes?
Yep, it would, you're correct. So the- Sorry, the way it would read, that number one, at the start of each regularly scheduled school committee meeting, individuals were signed in for an opportunity to speak during public comment. All speakers are encouraged to present their remarks in a respectful manner. The two sentences about the time limit would be stricken.
So do you have an, it sounds like you, since you brought it forward, don't have a overall time limit in mind?
I don't. And really, I don't because it's not been an issue. And public comment is at the discretion of the chair.
Okay.
Was my thought.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you. Other discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I've seen, I've seen other school districts that have had a policy that saying segment shall not exceed 15 minutes is, rather than it would be something much longer, shall not exceed an hour. And I hear you saying that we don't ever come up with that situation and that the chair can, is at the discretion of the chair, but I wonder if there, I wonder if there should be a parameter that's, I don't, I don't have a problem with us negating it by any means. I just, I wonder if, so that the committee is able to conduct its own business, that it needs to conduct, if there should be, okay, after an hour, we're going to move on. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying to limit anyone. I just, you know, this, I'm-
I think that's just it.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Yeah, I really appreciated you bringing this to us, Chair Poirot, and getting rid of the 15 minute, because what I noticed is that you have never limited public comment. In fact, you've extended and given permission for students in particular to speak to us more than once, you know, at a meeting. And, and I think that the nights when we have a lot of people here interested in public comment are exactly the nights when we don't want to limit, because those are the most contentious issues, the issues that people have a lot of passion about and where we really need to listen to people. So, so far, it hasn't, I haven't, I imagine that there are some districts where the number of people coming to meetings means essentially, if you permit everyone to speak, you're there until midnight, and then you start work on the rest of the agenda. But in Greenfield, with a population our size, so far, it has been manageable, even on nights of lots of controversy, for us to get our work done, even if there's a lot of public comments. So thanks for bringing this to us.
Thank you. Other comments, questions, discussion? Okay, so it sounds like we're ready to vote. The motion is with regard to the first reading of policy BEDH as revised, the public comment policy, and do we have anyone abstaining from voting? Anyone voting, no. So it looks like it passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move into the motion for the next policy first reading. Do we have someone who wants to make the motion on that? Payment, DK payment procedures. I think we're just moving to approve the first reading. It didn't look like there was any thing that needed to be adjusted while we're here. So a motion to approve the first reading of policy DK payment procedures as presented.
So moved.
Member Johnson Musad, a second? Member Wall's got it, I can feel it.
Second, yeah.
Okay. Any discussion on this one?
Superintendent?
I can provide a little bit of information. First, the strikeout that you see in the, I think it's fifth paragraph, was actually a strike that had been identified when the policy subcommittee did the first review of these policies with MASC. So that was something identified previously by the committee at that time. The additional change is moving from a minimum of four signatures authorizing the warrant to a minimum of one. That is allowed by state statute, mass general law, and that, I believe, is included in your packet. The issue is not that any of the presentation of the warrant would change, it would still be sent out the same way that it is, so all members would have the opportunity to review. But the, in terms of business office operations, with respect to all of your very busy lives and jobs and everything else, at times, the business office is delayed in processing the warrant, waiting for signatures. So again, all members would continue to be able to have access to the warrant. It would just allow the business office to move forward processing it as soon as they received one. So that's the request.
Thank you. Thank you for explaining it. For discussion, questions, comments?
I'll just say, I think this actually might have the, you know, you might think with four people looking at and signing the warrant, it increases the amount of responsibility, but I almost feel like with one person doing it, it's like that person is kind of really taking responsibility that they've reviewed it. And I just feel like when it gets to four, it's just possible to imagine some member saying, well, three other people have already looked at this and approved it, so I'm just going to give the business office what they need. So anyway, I think that, especially given that we can always still review the bills and ask questions, that we don't need to be expending valuable administration resources on chasing us down to, to sign warrants.
Well said, thank you. Other discussion, questions, comments? Other discussion, questions, comments? I did say well said, thank you. Anything else? I can't tell, Member Martini, you have a poker face, I can't tell. You seem like you're ready to talk, but I can't tell.
I believe in not saying things when they're not necessary.
Okay. Okay, so I am going to move to a vote. This is the policy on payment procedures DK. It's a first reading. Any abstentions from the vote? Any no votes? So we're going to say that that's also a unanimous vote, thank you. And we're going to move on. I've now buried my agenda, so, oh, here it is. The affirmations. Member Johnson Musad, do we want to do these individually as a consent? How do you want to do that?
As a consent?
That's the best news I've heard all night. All right. So we are, basically, we are not only affirming, which is, we waived the second reading, but we're still going to say, yep, we are aware that we waived the second reading, we want to make sure this is what we want to do. We're also affirming, if you didn't catch the discussion at the very beginning of this section of the agenda, that we have a policy about how we implement policies, and we're going to be better about this piece of it where we affirm things where we have waived the first reading. So I like that there's, we're affirming multiple things here that really-
The only correction I'll make is I'm really trying to, for us to be disciplined as a school committee and not using that language about waiving the second reading. It's, it's just that it's become a bit of a semantic issue, but we're, we are having a second reading, it happens to be an affirmation, I don't know. That's all.
So you're, okay, so it's just a semantic thing, but you would prefer that we just not, not even mention, the second readings, hearings, feelings won't get hurt, we'll just-
Right.
With the affirmation, okay.
You don't want the second hearings, because there, because there are two readings.
Right.
There's the reading where we enacted on an emergency basis, and then there's the reading where we affirm it.
Yes.
But it's not a typical second reading where it's only after the second reading that it gets implemented.
I understand what you're saying.
It's still a second reading.
Thank you. They still won't get his feelings hurt, I'm sure. They still won't get their feelings hurt, I'm certain. Okay. We are going to, by consent, I'm looking for a motion to affirm the following policies by a consent motion, ADF, school district wellness program, JKAA, physical restraint of students, JHD, exclusions and exemptions from school enrollment, JLCB, inoculations of students, and IHBG, homeschooling. Do I have a motion to that effect?
So move.
Member Wall, and a second?
Second.
Second from Member Johnson Musad. Any discussion? I'm hearing none. I'm hearing none. Okay. We're going to move right to a vote on this. Anyone abstaining from vote, from voting on the affirmation? Anyone opposed? We're again going to have a unanimous vote, thank you, on the affirmation of those policies. And now, the review of Section C policies on general school administration. Member Johnson Musad, please.
This also would be a motion to- This also would be a motion to, to approve these policies on a first reading by a consent agenda. And then, we would during discussion capture any comments that folks want to be incorporated by the Policy and Program Subcommittee and then bring it back to you, of course, for the second reading.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the Section C policies on general school administration as presented. And then, as necessary, we might amend that motion? Is that what you're saying?
Not that we would amend the motion, but that we would capture the discussion and incorporate people's feedback into our discussion at the policy subcommittee level and bring back the revised.
Okay. So, do you have a suggestion on how to word the motion?
Sure, I'll just make it myself.
Please.
I move to approve on a consent basis the Section C policies, general school administration as presented on the first reading.
And the second?
Second.
From Vice Chair Wall. Okay. Discussion on this section. So, I think the first thing, I just wanna clarify, and I cheated and I asked Christine, the markups that are in there are from when?
This was the Mass. Review of our policies with their recommendations for changes.
So, the recommendations are from MASC?
That's correct, yep.
And in terms of our internal process, I guess the way I think of it is, we hire the superintendent to make sure they can carry out our policies. So, do we have a procedure in place where Christine gets to see it first?
Gets to see?
Like, next time, when we bring Section D, does she get to see it and, and say, yeah, these all look good and I can support these and I can, I can put these in place and I can?
Yes, the superintendent is part of the policy subcommittee and works with MASC in particular and especially the items that are really about the administration. She'll be, or personnel, she'll be in very close contact with them on those revisions and changes. But one thing that's wonderful about the service that, that Mass. provides is it brings everything up to date with current law and best practices. And in particular, I think one of the, there are a couple of themes you can kind of see in the changes that they've suggested. One is updating language. So, instead of saying he, she, saying they and using, you know, non-gender, non-gender specific pronouns. But also, items where our policies were really kind of getting into the superintendent's business, where it really kind of, or laying out the procedure, exact procedure for how the superintendent would be evaluated. We don't need that. The, you know, the state provides guidance documents on the, on the evaluation instruments for superintendents. So, it kind of, that's another theme that you'll see, updating language and taking out aspects where we were getting too much heavily into the procedures when this is really supposed to be a broad policy document.
Thank you so much. I really, I appreciate that explanation. Other questions, discussion, things that we wanna bring up about, changes? I feel like I'm ignoring you guys, I'm just making sure. Okay. Can't win with the glasses. Any, anything? I mean, I'm ready to vote. I reviewed it all ahead of time myself. I'm ready to vote. I hope others are ready to, to vote.
I'll just say, I know that members may have gotten this unfairly short turnaround in terms of having the time to, to read through everything. But there's still plenty of time to share your feedback with us before the policy subcommittee reconvenes to look at this. So, if you don't have comments tonight, we're happy to hear those throughout the process.
That's a good point, thank you. And policies, I like to say, are dynamic. We should at any point feel comfortable, hey, we need to look at this policy and feel like we have a procedure for bringing that forward. So, you're not, you're not tapping me, you're good over here?
I'm good, I've read these, I'm, all of the edits make sense and are able to be implemented.
Awesome. So, we're ready to move to a vote? Anyone abstaining from voting? Anyone opposed? That also passes unanimously, thank you. And Member Johnson Musad, I appreciate your organization and your preparedness to walk us through all of that. That was much easier and paying less than I thought it would be.
My pleasure. And for the ones, for the items that were affirmed tonight, those, if they aren't already, they'll be put up on the district website in the Policies and Procedures Manual page, so.
Great.
I made that note. And I would like to share with Member, or Secretary Ekstrom, this section was one of the shortest remaining to be reviewed.
Well, there's a little slice of having to look forward to.
Exactly. Thanks for that.
I think this is what this letter was, this was letter? C, and we have up through L, I believe, is that correct?
Sweet.
I think so.
And we're hoping to get through these by the end of the summer, so. Fun times ahead.
We all have goals.
All right, so I'm gonna be painful as I am when I have things in front of me and get to mull about it a little bit. I'm looking at file JHD, Exclusions and Exemptions from School Enrollment. And I have a question I wanna ask that we've affirmed.
That we've already affirmed and voted on?
That I have a question on. Do I need to go to policy to ask that question? Or can I ask it here?
We can, we can talk about it right now.
Okay, so graduation from the 12th grade of any school or receipt of, so, the following shall be grounds for denial of admission to school or diversion to an appropriate alternative program or services. Graduation from the 12th grade of any school or receipt of any document evidencing completion of the equivalent of a secondary curriculum. So, we have students that are permitted and should be provided an education through age 22, 20?
22nd birthday, correct?
Some of those students do graduate with their class.
I would.
Or is that, they graduate in?
There is a distinction between participating in the graduation ceremony and events and exiting their high school equivalent education.
Okay. All right, I wanna make sure that we're all clear about that because.
Because we all voted to approve it?
Right. Well, there's that, but.
But we, we do follow the.
You know, that stuff piques my brain every single time, so.
We definitely follow the HEI requirements for.
Thank you both.
Thank you for saying that out loud, that's why I was driving it.
We are on to item seven, the budget update. I did not mention at the beginning of the night that Andy Piccat, our business manager, was not able to join us tonight. But he is planning to be present for the budget meeting on Monday. He will be in person with us at the high school. Budget. Do you have an update? Are you just looking for questions? Is that the?
I have the general overview at this point, that the spending, you know, my Cliff Notes from Andy and my process in district at this point. The budget is being spent down according to plan. At this point in the year, we are continuing to review all open purchase orders, releasing encumbered funds that we don't anticipate being used, looking at any anticipated spending between now and the end of the year. So, it's, we are getting more and more into the push to, do we really need this? Is this really this year's expenditure? Or can we release those funds? The business office is also moving more into the reclassification that Andy had referenced last time, where funds that have been expended out of the general funds are being moved into the grants and revolving accounts. So, you will see some of the grant lines that have not been expended up through now. You'll start seeing some of that change. And you may, you know, you'll likely see the general fund balance increase in some cases, but the grant balances will decrease. So, that's normal business office procedure at this point in the year.
Thank you. Do we have questions about the budget? This is FY '22 budget. Anyone? Appreciate that, thank you. And we are moving on. The next thing, I believe, is the retainer for DuPere.
Yes.
There is a copy of the retainer. I have a little bit of an overview. So, we pay them on a retainer which keeps them in our stead for whatever we need. And the original retainer, we signed with them about a year ago. We were like, sign it quick before they changed their mind because it was not much money at all. And we knew how much we needed them. And Russ said, I'm not worried about it, I'm not worried about it. And then, sure enough, Christine comes on board and he says, gosh, you guys are a lot of work. This is not doubled, this 3,000 per month amount. This is not quite doubled what, that we were paying 1,800 a month. Our previous attorney, our average was about $6,000 to $7,000 a month. DuPere is, is, has been amazing. They are, they are a lifeline for many, many things that come up and many things that come up very quickly. And I'll also say that they represent a fair number of the other school districts in the area. So, they're a great resource for how other schools are approaching, how their districts are approaching certain legal issues. So, I would recommend that we go forward this, and I, I got distracted. I meant to make the motion, I'm sorry. I was looking for my agenda that I lost again. So, I would take a motion to approve the retainer for DuPere Law Firm as presented.
So, moved.
And a second? Thank you.
Second.
It was Ekstrom and Wall? And further discussion? I meant to do that after I made the motion, I'm sorry. Further discussion? Anyone? All right, we did lose, hopefully, Member Martini, it wasn't something I said. We'll, we'll move to a vote. And anyone abstaining from voting on this? Anyone opposed? All those in favor? That is unanimous, okay? Excellent, thank you all for that. We're getting, okay. NASDAQ, is that, yes.
I guess, I mean, just for the record, would it be, I don't know how Susan Farber has recorded this, but is it a, one abstention from Member Martini because she wasn't here for the vote?
Oh, thank you. You'll note that she stepped out or something? Yeah, thank you. The NASDAQ proposal. So, we'll move on to this. I'll let the superintendent explain it. We have a proposal from the same organization that did the enrollment projections. And you have a copy in your packet.
So, as we had discussed when we agreed to move forward requesting this, that questions had come up in the past about a variety, several topics that seemed to all meet at one time. One was the potential use of Green River School. One was the questions that had previously been discussed by this committee, as I understand, regarding the equity of how students were identified as attending our elementary schools. And then, in the more recent past, questions had come up about the potential of moving 5th grade back into the elementary level. And we did first do the enrollment projections, which I shared, you folks will see at the next meeting. And NASDAQ can do a more comprehensive look at all of our school facilities and talk with people about the goals of the facilities, get specifics about how many rooms, square footage, what programs we're looking at, what types of programs we have, so that they can analyze what our options are in terms of facility use. And since they've done the enrollment projection, it's, it might be a nice segue to have them look at doing the study for us. And you can see that they do a fair amount of background and communication with people. They are proposing to do most of their information gathering remotely, so. But there will be some onsite work or report gathering from my office to provide to them. And then, they'll give, give us a study and report to you as a committee or me, however, we'd like that to be done, on what the final options are. And then, certainly, it would be up to a larger discussion about how you'd like to go forward. But I, my belief is that the scope of this work is outside of the capacity that the administration currently could take on. It's, we're just not able to devote the time and they have experience in doing this type of a project. It makes much more sense to me for them to be leading the work.
Sure. Thank you for that. So, I would, at this point, entertain a motion to approve the, what is it? Facility usage study?
Best educational use of school facilities.
Thank you. Best educational use of school facilities study from NASDAQ as presented or as proposed.
So, moved.
Does the mayor, and a second?
Second.
Multiple seconds, so we're good to discuss further discussion. Mayor Rita Gardner, please.
I agree with Superintendent DeBarge. It's an excellent use of $17,980. It's work that we would not be able to do ourselves. I would like, however, the report to be presented to the school committee.
Absolutely. Thank you, yes. Thank you for that. Yes.
So, as I'm looking at this, I'm thinking about our plan to discuss redistricting. It seems to me that this would be something really useful.
It's foundational.
To have with that.
That's why we haven't had that committee meet.
Yep.
We want, it was really important, at least for me, and to have the superintendent's, superintendent's office be informed.
Yep.
About our measures. What do we actually, how many students do we have? Where, where are they? And how many facilities do we have? How big are they? And how could they all fit? Yeah, that's, this, this and the enrollment projections in this are a foundation to having informed discussions and planning around those things. Absolutely. Further discussion? Vice Chair Wall?
I think it's also important that we know what we need, whether we need Green River School or we need to sell it as surplus building. We have struggled with that thought for as many years as I've been in Greenfield, I think.
Can't imagine ever being able to actually answer the question.
Right.
To do with Green River School.
And we've discovered we cannot figure that out. So, we need professional help. So, I totally support this.
Thank you. Any further? Yeah, Member Johnson Musad?
What, is there any, I just don't know the rules of procurement, but is there any rule about needing to go out to bid or anything like that? Or is it?
I'm gonna speak out of turn, I'm sure, because this is not my area of expertise. But I do believe it's under the, the threshold for needing to go out to bid. And we, the superintendent, would you do purchase like a membership of, in something?
Yes, basically, we got a coupon because we became members. But I did become an associate member of NASDAQ. It gets us some professional services. In part, there's a discount for being an affiliate. And what we paid is definitely less than what the discount reflects. So, not to be flip, but yes, we did get a, a price reduction because we are affiliate members.
We can call it a coupon, I like calling it.
20% off.
School districts get coupons too.
We need more of those.
Right? Any, any further discussion? I'm censoring a general consensus that we wanna go ahead with this. Any further discussion?
I'm just so excited about this.
Me too.
This, this will answer so many questions for the public who constantly ask, why, 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 why? And there's now, no answer for them. And so, I think this will go a long way towards building trust with families and with the public. And I think if there's any way to make as much of this transparent as possible when it comes out, that would be really to, that'd be great. Be to our benefit.
Thank you. All right, so, Member Martini? Yes? You're good? Move to a vote?
All good.
Okay. Any abstentions? Any no votes? So, that passes unanimously, thank you all. And the next item is, we've revised the 22-23 academic calendar. Tell me more.
We, it's a very minor adjustment and unfortunately, we reflected the. We, it's a very minor adjustment and unfortunately, we reflected the incorrect election date for next year on the calendar. So if the committee would be so kind as to re-vote so that we vote on the correct day in Greenfield next year. We had reflected it on the first, not the eighth. So my apologies for that oversight, but this is the corrected version reflecting it on the eighth.
Isn't it like the first Tuesday in November unless Tuesday is the first and then?
Yes, then it's the, it's the first Tuesday following the first Monday.
Thank you. That's, yeah, thank you. So a motion to approve the revised Greenfield Public Schools 2223 academic calendar.
So moved.
That was Member Denis. And a second. I'll second it. Any further discussion? We're not going to try to move election day. All right. Any abstentions? Any no votes? That passes unanimously. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, okay, so we had some new business items, two new business items that came up at the last meeting that we've added here. So the first one is item number 11, putting minutes in the recorder. And I guess maybe Lauren or Christine, Lauren did some investigating. And in your packet is the pricing for the recorder. And it quickly gets cost prohibitive for us to put much more than kindergarten registration announcements in the recorder. And so we did bring that forward to say, I can't imagine that that would be something we could spend money on. But it's important to look at all our options and see, we should discuss further in case folks want to discuss further. Anyone? Member Denis, was this you that brought this word?
No.
No, I can't, I can't remember who it was.
My suggestion was to put student council general info in the recorder, but not minutes.
Student council general info. So one of the things we did, the superintendent and I did talk about are some ideas for possibly moving forward with like a once a month page in the recorder that's about the district, something like that.
That's a great idea.
But we, again, would need to look at both content and how often we would run it and what the cost would be, so.
But the minutes are online, so.
Yeah, and no one ever calls looking for the minutes, so that was one thing we learned from Lauren.
Yeah, no, this was not me.
I can't imagine why.
The price sheet would still be relevant, so.
I've often wondered what the price sheet was, so I'm just going to tuck that away for future.
And my packet has an extra one if you, if anyone needs one.
You never know when you want to.
Are we good to, are we good to move on to the next one?
Yes, I think the next one's me.
Discussion recording of subcommittee minutes, meetings? So this was asked a couple of times in a roundabout way to discuss, so let's discuss. I don't know if we need a motion ahead of time because I don't quite understand what's happening.
If we need one, I have one.
You want to try your motion and then we can discuss?
My first baby motion.
Sure, go ahead.
All right, here we go. Okay, so I move that all school committee subcommittee meetings be recorded and made available to the public on the city website. Since subcommittee meetings are open to the public and happen remotely, they should be recorded. Glenn and I spoke with GCTV and they shared that recording meetings would be easy and possible.
That's the motion?
That's the motion.
Any second to the motion?
Second.
You might want to shorten it up so it's more specific. Only because, like.
So less than three lines.
Well, we can adjust it after we get to second.
That's fine, okay.
Yeah. I was going to say like chop off the last two sentences.
Cool, I, three lines, I figured that was. Two, one line.
So we had, we had the motion from Member Denis, the second from the mayor is what I heard. So let's discuss. Okay.
Yes, you know what, well, if we're going to chop off a sentence, I can give you a copy with this last sentence. But yes, all school committee, subcommittee meetings be recorded and made available to the public on the city website.
I think, I think that's fine. Well, we'll leave it like that and we'll discuss and modify if we need to. Discussion?
My only reservation was that last piece about on the city's website. The city's redoing their website and we do have some parameters. So I'm not saying no, I'm just saying that I think I, I would need to figure out whether we can, they might be able to be put on the website for a period of time, but then have to be archived in some way, so.
Well, and we can put them on our website where they already are.
Yeah, I was just going to say, so if it, if it's truly the city website, I'm sure that you could, you could have a subcommittee meeting minutes, I'm sorry, recordings up there for a certain period of time. You know, but it, it just so happens that we are in the process right now at the city level of having to archive a lot of those things because we have limitations on the new website.
Microphone.
Sorry. Where do city subcommittee meeting recordings get housed?
That's a really good question. Yeah.
They are on GCTV records them and put them on YouTube.
I think it's GCTV that, yeah, supplies us with that.
So I think that it could be, I mean, in the past, our past practice was we would have recordings. Sometimes they were just audio recordings and there was a link to it from the page for that particular subcommittee, for that particular meeting. You could also work with GCTV, so they would be recorded, put on YouTube, and then you could still have a link. So you're not using website space to actually host a video.
I wasn't actually thinking of using server space. I just thought they need to be accessed by the public.
They have to, they have to be stored somewhere.
True, but.
If you do an audio.
So if, if you embed it in the website, it's just the link that carries you over to YouTube.
That's right.
And so then YouTube typically would, well.
And that would be fine.
You have to pay, you have to pay to have YouTube host your stuff.
No.
Some, I, okay.
It's, it's free, I mean, GCTV, first of all, GCTV offers us as a service and they have, they have it set up. But for example, I record the, I take the Zoom recordings for the Wendell Select Board meetings. I upload them to YouTube. There's no charge. People may have to watch ads in some cases in order to view certain content. But I believe the way GCTV is set up, you can watch it without ads. And I assume it's because they have a nonprofit status or something like that.
And this, this would continue, this is about remote and in-person meetings? You're expecting we can record in-person meetings as well?
I hadn't really thought about in-person meetings.
Because remote only lasts at this point until July.
So we'd have to think of something then for in-person because they're public meetings, so people need to be able to access them.
People have access to the minutes. That's where I'm confused. Is I, I feel like this doesn't have enough thought behind it of how we would pull it off. And our experience with recording remote meetings is because of the way that we log into that WebEx, that we were never actually able to retrieve the recording because that Web, oh, sorry, that WebEx account belongs to so many people, it would often not get recorded successfully or you wouldn't be able to access it to then put it somewhere else. Member Johnson Musad?
I mean, we're, we're not actually talking about creating a brand new thing that's never existed before. We, we had a past practice, as you can see if you scroll through the subcommittee pages, of posting recordings of meetings. Oftentimes, it was just someone with the phone pressing record and then getting that audio file up onto the school committee, up onto the GPS K-12 website. So I think if we just, just define it as audio or video recording, or just describe it as a recording, then it doesn't actually require that much technology or extra work.
I guess that hasn't been our experience during the pandemic.
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite done with my comment. So, you know, I saw Chair Poiety, your response, or maybe it was Secretary Ekstrom, but a member of the, of the community wrote and, you know, said, we want recordings of subcommittee meetings like we used to have. And the response was that we don't have the capacity. And I, you know, just in passing, one night, I just asked, you know, gentlemen from GCTV here, like, how hard is it for you to record subcommittee meetings? And I got an email the next day from Nick Ring from GCTV, talking about how easy it is for them, how eager they are to do it, and how they can come into a virtual meeting and click record. When we are in person, it would require making arrangements with them. They may not always have the capacity to attend and video record, but we could always make recordings on our phones and post an audio recording, so.
So I guess I was accurate to say that it's a capacity issue because you just used the same language.
Well, but I don't recall saying it was a capacity issue. My concern was that we didn't have a policy.
That's also my concern.
We've never had a policy about it before and we did it all the time, so I think it's really.
I don't ever recall doing it, so I don't know when that was.
There's one on the website.
That was at the request of the superintendent.
So.
I, I understand what you're saying. I'm just, that's, it's, we just, we, we've moved on.
I, I guess I have a question. I, I do think it needs to go to the policy committee.
Yeah.
I don't understand, you're saying we have the capacity. Who's going to schedule and contact GCTV? Who's going to make sure that everything gets posted, whether it's remote or onsite? There are, what happens if it doesn't work? I think this needs a procedure behind it. I, I'm not comfortable knowing that we have in the superintendent's office the capacity to arrange these things for subcommittees. This is new. I, I am, I'm honestly surprised that there's such a push to do this and do it right now. I originally thought that this was about people thinking that remote meetings were going to go on forever and we can just press record. And I will say, we have tried multiple times and been unsuccessful with our own meetings. So to sit here and say, it's not a problem, we just press record, isn't accurate. And the other piece is, there are definitely logistics involved anytime you do this in person, especially considering the facilities we often have available to us for subcommittee meetings.
Again, I don't understand. We used to just hit record on a phone and then post the audio file. It wasn't that different from posting a PDF or the minutes from a meeting. It doesn't actually require a ton of capacity. And I think that's, I think it would really serve the public. It would serve school committee members. There was a budget subcommittee meeting that I'm on that subcommittee. My, my, you know, I expressed what my schedule was. My schedule wasn't able to be accommodated. I didn't have a way of watching the meeting. I don't, I don't understand why it's so difficult, isn't it? That's something we want. We want public engagement. We want people to be able to observe our deliberations. And we have the technology that makes it relatively easy, so I think this is a no-brainer. I don't understand the pushback.
Member Wall, go ahead.
Member Johnson Musad, may I suggest that you come to us with exactly how it's going to be done and an example at some meeting that you've gone to on how we do it? I mean, for us to sit here and argue back and forth, you tell us it's easy. Others, I mean, I know that I have pressed record on meetings. And, and first they get stuck on my computer and I don't know how to get them off. And then they take up all the space and then it never gets put anywhere. So when I, when somebody does, like Susan Ekstrom comes and takes it off my, my computer, it disappears into the, so if you can just let us know how this can happen, rather than our sitting here, you know, tell us the steps. Here is what you will do to record a meeting and this is what you will do to post it and so that we all know what the general procedure is, please.
So should we spend time with GCTV and create this procedure and present it? Because they're the ones who are going to be assisting us and facilitating this.
It's not that simple because we don't know where the rooms will be when we go back live. It's really hard to get a room to have a meeting in. I mean, I, somebody needs to explore this whole thing and figure out how it would happen.
Mayor Wieder-Gartner, please, go ahead.
I was just going to kind of reiterate the same thing that Member Wall just did and, and Member Poiety in terms of just taking it to the policy subcommittee or at least having a clearer idea of the procedural aspects of it and how it could get done. Again, this is not a no, in my mind, it's not a no. It's just a, for further discussion and more clarification about exactly who would be responsible for ramrodding all of it and how it would get done. So I think that's excellent suggestion. I, I appreciate what Member Johnson Musad is trying to do. I was not able to go to any of the budget subcommittee meetings. So I would very much like to be able to see them or hear them or, or something. But I, I also appreciate what Member Wall just said in terms of going back to in-person meetings. We struggle in City Hall to figure out where to hold meetings just within City Hall. So, you know, and they don't all occur at night. And you can't always have access to this room at night. Maybe there's rooms in the high school that we can dedicate, dedicate to subcommittee meetings. But I think those are things that just need to be figured out. And then, and then we can go forward with some sort of a policy that works for doing this.
And I'm totally in favor of recording meetings. I love to go back and watch meetings and see what happened. And perhaps when the new library opens, there will be a lot of space in there and they can set up rooms for us to record. I just don't know how it would happen now. And I'm happy to do it if you just tell me, step one, you do this, step two, you do this, step three, you do this.
Yeah, there's definitely an app for that. This can be very simple. Mayor Wieder-Gartner, do you guys record your city meetings when you're going around looking for rooms or you're not sure? I mean, do those meetings get recorded and if so, how?
Most of our meetings have been online, so yes, that gets done. As far as I know, I mean, I sit on two subcommittees, the fire station and the library, and they're both recorded. But yes, they are recorded. The ones that have been online are, are recorded. I will tell you that we are slowly but surely making the City Hall meeting room, second floor, hybrid capable, so that will help as soon as we get that one last part we're waiting for from China. So, so there will be at least one room that can be made available, not every hour of every day, but it's certainly schedulable and it can be scheduled up through a certain point in the evening.
I saw Vice Chair Wall and then Member Johnson Musad.
I'm on the Parking Commission and on Planning and Construction City Committees and we don't record them and we don't know how to record them. So, I mean, I, I want to say that the big committees like the library and the fire station are taken care of for us, but I have no clue how to record the Planning and Construction or the Parking or Greenfield Redevelopment Authority. That's another one I'm on. They're not recorded. So this is a bigger issue than just.
You know, it, it sounds like there wouldn't be any objection to anyone, from anyone for if GCTV were to look at our schedule of subcommittee meetings and attend and record and post without any requirement of cooperation or work from the administration, that that would be okay and they have the capacity to do that. So I wonder if we could, even if we, you know, end up sending the, the kind of, the, the motion to kind of mandate this going forward for all our subcommittees. I wonder if in the short term, we can just have as a practice that if GCTV comes to a subcommittee meeting and is willing to record it, that they aren't asked not to, which did happen, from what I understand, at one subcommittee.
It happened at the budget subcommittee and it was because we don't have a policy about it. I was very clear with everyone.
It's a, it's a public meeting, so first of all, anyone from the public who wishes to record our meetings may. We don't, GCTV didn't need permission to do that.
So Glenn, what I was told is that you were the person who requested they be there. As a member of the subcommittee, and the decision is made that something isn't going to happen because we don't have a policy with it, as the chair of that subcommittee, that is something that I'm able to do. Now, had someone, had it been anyone else who is not a member of the school committee, who, who had been there and wanted to record, that would have been fine. I would have had no objection, but you, what I was told. But you, what I was told during that meeting is that you requested that the meeting be recorded. You are a member of the subcommittee, the subcommittee of the school committee, who doesn't have a policy regarding recording meetings. The appearance is that you are acting directly in the face of a policy that didn't exist and trying to undermine the chair of the Budget Subcommittee, who in this case happened to be me.
I'm going to interrupt. How about, I'd like to make a friendly amendment to the motion to reflect that a, this motion be referred to, or this action be referred to the Policy Subcommittee. And I'd like to ask if the, if Member Denise would accept a friendly amendment to that, and we can work out the wording after.
That sounds great. I'd just like to make sure that it gets worked on, because I don't think it's a matter of will, it's just a matter of ways, and there seems to be options that the mayor's offering.
And you're a member of Policy Subcommittee, as am I, right?
Yes.
As is Member Johnson Musad.
Yeah.
Who seconded that? Do you remember who did the second? The mayor, would you accept the friendly amendment?
I certainly would.
And can we reword that to reflect that we move to refer this to the Subcommittee Policy Program for further discussion and a plan, and a policy? Yeah, thank you. Member Johnson Musad.
I have another motion on this. I move that we invite GCTV to all our future subcommittee meetings to record and post to YouTube.
Are you asking to make a friendly amendment? What are you doing?
This is the second motion.
Why would we deal with two motions at once?
What, we did, oh, we haven't voted yet on the first one.
No.
To refer to policy, okay.
Right. Is there further discussion about referring it to policy? Okay, so we'll go to a vote, and any abstentions? Any no votes? So it'll be referred to policy for further discussion. And Member Johnson Musad, what were you asking for?
I move that we invite GCTV to record our subcommittee meetings.
Anyone?
And post to YouTube, post to YouTube.
A second from anyone?
Second.
Discussion? Why are we doing this?
Well, why wouldn't we? We've said we're.
You just referred it to, for policy.
We.
What are you doing?
We referred the concept of a motion that would require the school committee to record all subcommittee meetings in the future, that people raised concerns about what would be the process, what would be the procedure, do we have the capacity? I understand that people want to make sure we have the capacity before we make a long-term commitment to recording every subcommittee, but I think it doesn't take any extra capacity to just extend an invitation to GCTV to come to our subcommittee meetings and record them. It doesn't require any extra effort from the administration or the school committee except beyond just extending the invitation. I'm told that.
How does that invitation get extended? Who is going to call them and ask them, or email them and ask them? How is that process going to happen? Explain that to me.
Okay.
How will they know about the meetings?
Okay, all of the meetings are posted publicly on the website, so we could just, you could just, we could just ask the chair or the superintendent to send an email to GCTV inviting them to come to.
So again, so again, it becomes a question of capacity, and we need a process in place, which is a policy.
Okay, so I think I'll leave my motion as is. I can tell I haven't convinced you. I think that, I guess we disagree about it. I don't think that it requires a ton of capacity to send an email to them, letting them know they're welcome to our subcommittee meetings to record. That's my perspective.
Member Ekstrom.
I feel like you're trying to manipulate this so it doesn't have to go to policy.
I call the question. I call the question.
And I'm not trying to be negative.
I call the question.
You moved to call the question that I think requires a.
Yep, we need to vote on whether or not we're ready to vote on this discussion. Anyone interested in voting right now, you would answer yes when we vote, or if you don't want to vote and you want to discuss further, you would say no. So anyone abstaining from calling the question? Anyone saying no, that we want to continue discussing? Okay, so we're going to call the question, we're going to vote on Glenn's motion, which is to start, to invite GCTV and start recording subcommittee meetings now. So any abstentions from voting? Anyone voting no? No. What, okay, anyone voting yes?
I was a no.
Okay, so anyone voting no? One, two, three, four. Okay, so the no is carry. I think that's the end of that discussion for now. And we would move on to discussing new business items, new business items for further discussion at other meetings. Does anyone have anything?
I have one.
Member Johnson Musad, go ahead.
Let me see if I can find my notes. I wanted to see if we could have, as an agenda item, to discuss a possible endorsement of the Fair Share Amendment. The Fair Share Amendment would put an additional tax of percentage, of four percentage points of a person's annual income above $1 million, and the funds would go to public education, infrastructure, and public transportation. So I would like to see us discuss that.
Do you know, is there a template for language for somewhere? Like, a lot of times, groups send around a template for referendum language.
I think there probably is, and we could have someone make a presentation to us as well.
Well, that's not, okay. Let's see what we get. How about just like a template for a resolution?
Yeah, I could bring, I could share a template for a resolution if we have this on the agenda.
I think that would be helpful.
Your meeting, yep.
Yeah, absolutely. Fair Share Amendment. Other items for new business? Yeah, I saw Member Martini first, and then Member Denise.
I have been thinking recently about times in the past when the committee has talked about having listening sessions ourselves, and doing those in places in our community that are more accessible to people who, say, don't have ready access to transportation and things like that. And I would love to put that on the agenda to see if we can move that forward and make that happen.
Awesome, thank you.
Could you say that first part again? I couldn't, I couldn't, I didn't, I couldn't hear it.
Talking too fast. I was saying, I was thinking recently about times when the committee has talked about holding listening sessions ourselves out in the community, in places that are more accessible to members of the community who don't have ready access to transportation and other resources. We haven't done that yet, and so I was hoping that could be a new item, so we can move forward on doing that.
Yeah, I didn't catch the open listening piece, so the rest I got lost as well.
Member Denise, you had something, right?
My new business is the same as Member Martini's business, so.
The public listening sessions.
Yeah, I believe that Liz from MASK called them public hearings, although that sounds a little scary, so I like listening session better.
Thank you, thank you both. I actually have one too, and this would be like a long-term plan thing, and I didn't mention this to you yet, but it came up as we were discussing about recording meetings. I would actually like to talk about a process for determining if there are spaces, such as the auditorium or the library at the high school, that it would make sense to wire them for remote, hybrid, or in-person meetings, and discussing what that would cost and, you know, long-term plan for that.
Okay.
So we would have additional space that even if some, another group wanted to use it, like City Subcommittee or something, we could do that.
Okay.
So, yes, you're okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
You're using my agenda, so if you'd make.
Oh, yes, because mine's buried in my pile here, I'm sorry.
That's okay, just don't forget.
Any other new business items? Okay, thank you all for that, and our final item, I can't count in numerals that high, but I'm thinking it's 14, is I would entertain a motion to go into executive session, exemption reasons number one and seven. Exemption reason one is to discuss the reputation, character, physical condition, or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or to discuss the discipline or dismissal of complaints or charges brought against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual. The individual to be discussed in such executive session shall be notified in writing by the public body at least 48 hours prior to the proposed executive session, provided, however, that notification may be waived upon written agreement of the parties. And exemption seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant and aid requirements, this is approval of executive session minutes from February 9, 2022. The committee will not return to open session. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
That was the mayor in a second.
Second.
That was Vice Chair Wall. Any, let's just move to a vote. Any abstentions? Any noes? Okay, so we will move into execution, executive session, and I do need a motion to adjourn the public session.
So moved.
Member Johnson Musad in a second.
Second.
Everyone seconding that. Anyone abstaining? Anyone voting no? We are adjourned as of 8:01 PM. Thank you all.